In progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Becky down there.
We welcome you to the municipal council work meeting Tuesday, January twenty eighth at two P M. We will start with a roll call. Starting with council member Handley. Go ahead, Tor T. Handley.
Councilor McCabe.
Great appreciation.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Woodhull.
Becky Bogdan.
Thank you.
Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions, unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak. Until called on by the council chair. When speaking, please be sure to use a microphone so that the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear you. Please also be sure to limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the work meeting room. We also have been joined by council member Owen. Welcome, Travis. First, we have the proposed approval of the January fourteenth work meeting minute. You've had a chance to review those. Are there any objections or requested edits? Okay, then by unanimous consent, I will declare the minutes. Thank you, Kevin. Moving to council business, our first item is a resolution approving an agreement between Provo City and Xerxes. Xerxes.
Xerxes, yeah.
Society for Invertebrate Conservation to make Provo a member of Bee City USA, presented by council, city councillor Rachel Loppel.
Hey, oh, it is fun to be in in this spot. I haven't done this before. Uh, the reason I am the person presenting this is because I think it's a fun idea. So a year and a half ago, George and I were both at a conference in Portland. The Association for the Study of Literature and the Environment, we're both presenting papers there. My husband presented a paper there as well. And I talked to the bee people. Um, but they have a program with the Xerxes Society for Bee City USA. They also have one that's a bee campus. And the idea is that this is an ability or an opportunity to recognize and encourage cities that are doing these uh, practices that help pollinators. And I thought this is kind of an amazing things for Provo because we are in the desert state. We believe in making the desert blossom as a rose. Pollinators are a huge portion of that. And I suspected when I talked to them that Provo was probably doing almost everything on here already. And if we can get recognition for this and use this as an opportunity to kind of educate our community and share just like a really happy story. Um, I want to do that. I haven't used these things before. Does it do it? Ah, okay. So what is Bee City USA? This is a recognition of cities that have adopted certain practices and requirements. The legislature does a little resolution that says where bee city, we're doing these things. Um, and we have well, probably go through the legislative and administrative requirements there. There are no bee cities in the state of Utah. Which strikes me as really odd because this is consistent with kind of our Utah story. Um, we do have two bee campuses in Utah. They're both farther north, so we're not going to talk about them. Is there an on button? Oh, look at that. Okay. Talked about what bee city USA is. All right. So the Xerxes Xerxes Society for Invertebrate Conservation. Um, when we got like our little packet in the mail from the society, my seventeen year old is like, are you part of like an evil super organization like supervillains? Uh, because he thought that having a geneticist professor dad and a politician mom, that's exactly where we would be. And I'm like, yeah, sure, that's what we're doing. Um, so they're encouraging the creation of healthy habitats for native pollinators, especially bees. Honeybees are fantastic and you've heard about different bee initiatives to help move these um hives to do pollination for different farms, such as like almond groves and things like that. Most of the pollinators that do the work in our community are little native pollinators. They're not the domesticated honeybee. And they're these little solitary guys that work all by themselves. They don't work in hives. Um, and there's this huge diversity of these little critters. And for the most part, we don't look at them. They're invisible to us, right? They're not the kind of megafauna. They're not the cute fluffy bumblebee that bumble around that we think are adorable. But they are essential for keeping this kind of balance in our ecosystem. And so if what we're looking at are things that support these pollinators, we are doing other things that just create a more sustainable, rich and vibrant environment, which is ultimately better for people. Okay, pollinators. Responsible for a third of the food and drinks we consume. Eighty percent of our flowering plants depend on pollinators. Um, one of the plants, by the way, that doesn't so much, corn, because that's wind pollinated. I say that because my husband is a maze geneticist. We, I know too much about corn. Okay, in Utah, we've got one thousand one hundred different native bee species. Surprisingly enough, a lot of our native bee species are in the desert. Um, huge, huge biodiversity in in parts of the desert. Those little tiny things eking out existence. There are usually about twenty different bee species in the average garden and these, these native species of insects and the native plants work with each other, right? And the pollinators that we have throughout our country, but also in our city are in decline because we have been changing the environment so much, right? As we switch over to monocultures, areas of just grass or soybean or alfalfa, we are reducing the diversity of the plants and that affects the diversity of the little insects, that affects the diversity of the birds and everything else. So on these little tiny foundations rest everything that we see and we like. Okay, how does bee city help? So encourages native plant species. Um, in this area, most of the native plants that we're able to get at nurseries and things like that are kind of native to this broader region. They're not necessarily the natives specific to our particular canyons or our little area. You have to find a a crazy specialist who will propagate their own plants to get those things. If you want one of those specialists, I'm married to one and he will get you native plants that are particular to this area. But these larger regional natives are also water wise. They can be very beautiful. There can be really good plantings for these. And those will help the the create a this more diverse and robust habitat. Um, bee city also helps us to find alternatives to pesticides. Um, some pesticides I think are really useful, right? We have these as a tool for a reason, but if we're overusing them, then we're putting them into our water supply. You know, we have to filter it out. It's more work for us and there are these cascading harms as the little particular application of the pesticide to kill the one pest that we don't like also diffuse us out and affects other things. Okay, healthy nesting areas. And my favorite part is the spreading education and awareness. You know, we have lots of these kind of education events that we do for the city and we'll have booths that the sustainability committee goes to for like the oh, the Cinco de Mayo Festival or not. That's not what it is. It's the Festival Latino Mercado or the Freedom Festival or our Slate Canyon Days. Um, that committee often will talk about our shared solar or our rebate programs. And those are fun, but they're not as much fun for the kids. Bees are much more fun for the kids. And so this is a great hook for getting that kind of engagement and enthusiasm. Okay, legislative requirements. So what we would need to do is a resolution. Xerxes Society gives us a sample resolution. Our legal has looked at that and said, well, that doesn't actually work with our form of government. And so they have done a revision that keeps kind of the the substance, the content that they feel is important, but it's adjusted to be a way that we actually can do it. And we have not, have we talked to to them to see if they accept it or we're just going to try to push it through and call it good? We'll give them a little note. Yeah. Um, so we use the template, we commit to little bee city membership. And then they would, the society would approve it. Um, so I suppose if our if our adjustments are completely unacceptable to them, will be a B level bee city. Hey, so approve amendments to the general plan.
Couldn't resist.
No, no, if there's a chance for a bad dad pun, I'm taking it. Okay. Um, so amendments to general plan, this goes along with our sustainability conservation plan. This is actually a very lovely public education component that we could do that's consistent with the plan that we've already passed. Um, so we can consider our pest management practices. Like I say, our city is actually doing really good on this. And part of my reason for pushing this was to recognize the good that our Parks Department is doing in this regard and give them that recognition and accolade. Also, because if we are kind of publicizing how we're good, we are being example for our city, right? We're encouraging good actions. Um, identifications for pollinator friendly plantings and other measures to help preserve our little pollinators. I will say like the the little landscaping that we've got outside of Provo Power is a fantastic kind of water wise habitat, but it has pretty good bee populations and other little pollinators. So it's one example of how Provo has already been doing good things here. Okay, the fee is five hundred dollars annually because of the size of our city. There was some pushback at one point from the administration on this. They're like, why would we pay five hundred dollars for this? My thought is that we pay to be in all sorts of associations. And part of being in those associations is then we're considered for rankings and we get benefit from that. And I see that we would get this benefit from the recognition and um because that did feel like a burden that I said I I will help do the fundraising for that. And found out that we can have people who are excited about this in our community donate through the Provo Foundation to cover that fee. And if I'm wrong and there aren't enough people who are interested in doing the donation, then I'm pretty sure my my family will commit to covering it. Because, like I say, I'm married to a geneticist who cares about pollination. And we have been trying to practice this in our own home, in our own family. We've turned our front and side yard into a native garden that's water wise that has I don't know, at least thirty different native plants that have been collected and propagated and grow. Okay. You're looking at the time and I over time? Okay, I'm not paying attention to time. Administrative requirements. So designate department member as a liaison with the committee, designate a committee to facilitate the B C D program. Um, we've got the webpage to show our B C D activities. At least one sign showing support in a prominent public location. One educational event per year, develop, implement a program to create or expand these habitats. Track the annual area created or enhanced. Or integrate pest management plan and report these activities. Before determining that it would be worthwhile to come and talk to the rest of you about this, I worked with Hannah Salzle, who's our sustainability coordinator, who's done the research on all of the requirements and has coordinated with our good friends in parks to see how many of these things we're already doing and how onerous it would be to fold this into our existing activities and our committees. Because I did not want to create additional busy work for our city and our employees. Um, I was was told that this is something that is not a burden and you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, Scott.
Doug. Doug.
Doug, Doug, oh my gosh. I'm looking at too many different people. Hey, Doug. Ooh.
I think the requirements are something that we didn't didn't seem to to owners. Uh, the original view on this was, well, no, we're we're doing a lot of this in our sustainability plan right now. But there's maybe reason why we couldn't be supportive of this.
Oh, you have just worked on our shit. Yeah, um, and this is a really lovely thing that we can incorporate with our citizen sustainability committee to give them a very specific objective. This is something that's added on to like one of their readings a year. Um, but sometimes that committee, it's useful to give them some structured things and some clear assignments. And this is a really good way to help help use that committee. Next steps. Okay, submit our application with our slightly different language. And then it would come to us for a night meeting to pass the resolution and then approve that addition to the general plan. I just think it would be so cool, guys. Um, and I see this as as a good I just really lovely heartwarming, good feeling kind of story. Um, a lot of the groups that we're in and the accolades that we get have no relevance to like the the twelve and under group. But this is something that our kids can get excited about. And I see it as a really good way to do education and civic engagement and it makes me happy. Yes.
I appreciate all the time you've spent on this. My time as a neighborhood chair, though, has been very different. And I'm not so excited about this. I know I was approached by someone who had had several yard violations because they're part of the state bee city. And um I was asked to talk to Bill if they could kind of hold off on giving them that because the reason why their yard is in the condition that it is is because they are part of the bee program for the state of Utah. And people all over, at least my neighborhoods, there's people that let their yard go, let the dandelions go. And the excuse for allowing the dandelions to go is because it helps the pollinators. And then you've got the neighbor who spends hundreds, if not thousands of dollars on their lawn every single day of the summer. And they're mad because now not only do they have to maintain their yard, but they have to do something about all of the dandelions and unkept things on either side of their properties. And so I'm very, very concerned that even though this is a city thing, that we're sending the message to our public that it's okay to allow your yard to be something that's going to be contentious in the neighborhood and something that's going to be more of a burden to our zoning enforcement to enforce well kept yards.
All right. Yeah. Yeah, the question, if you allow your yard to become essentially a meadow, right, then you're over our our grass height requirement. Um, and some people really, really don't like that. You should all read the over story for my discussion on that matter. But aside from that, um, well, I think my thoughts about dandelions aren't appropriate here. But I will share a couple of them. And one is that dandelions are an invasive weed that were brought over to this continent by European settlers as a food source. And so the dandelions that grow in my yard, I harvest. And I eat the greens before they flower. They're a nice assertive green. They can be eaten raw before they're flowered. After that, they're too bitter and you do need to cook them. You can do the tubers. You can roast them and make dandelion tea. Um, and even though I've not done this, there is a strong history of making dandelion wine with your flowers. They aren't helping our native pollinators because they're not native plants. But there's something that we've brought into this area that wasn't supposed to be here. And now we're fighting against it. I see this program as an opportunity to help support the things that were here and to to kind of restore a little bit of a sense of a balance there. For for lawns being long. So if it's like a Kentucky bluegrass lawn that's just allowed to grow tall, those are not native plants. We would have native bunch grasses and things like that, which are an entirely different different type of thing. I suppose I could talk more with Scott about how we enforce on lawns and if there could be guidance for what kind of a lawn or landscaping is good. But as we have more people who are switching over to these water wise landscapings with the native plants, those are not kind of wild abandoned landscapes. They're they're pretty curtailed. Should be different. But I'll I'll go with you and look at these places.
Council member Christensen.
Um, I never put the dandelions and the bees together. Um, I mean, is there becoming a bee city? Does that somehow impact enforcement?
I don't believe so. Um, Hannah has a thought, though, because she's done more research on it than I have on how it would apply to our particular cities.
Just answer your question directly. No, it doesn't change our enforcement. The policies that we're adopting that are integrated pest management plan, things like that are what parks does is how we're using fertilizers. It's the kind of plant that's producing plants. It's hosting educational resources for our residents so they can get correct information and not be making the mistakes that we see in our neighborhood because those are the pollinators. So giving them the right information, changing our practices, honestly, just improving practice we're already doing, putting it down more writing, but no change to enforcement.
Thank you. Councilor McKay.
Um, I love bees and I love local honey. Um, I I guess my question is adding something else. I just don't like I'm not a big fan of adding something else that we report to or that we give money to or that we have to do a checklist of things to for them, for what benefit to us. And you know, it is time. It's our time to update a website, to do educational events, to do reporting, let's start a new committee. Um, I I guess I'm just more transactional. Like I don't want to start extra work for people or more things that we have to do as a city or employees. Especially when we are in a financial you know, budget is an issue, right? One of these ties we can, like, I'd rather that five hundred dollars go to the police. Like, I just don't I know it's not a large amount. And I love that you're magnanimous and want to donate that. I like, I do like the idea of that or that it would come from a nonprofit or donations from the public if that's something they're passionate about. But there's still that time factor of updating things that we could spend on enforcement instead of on doing a website or educational events or reporting. So I know I I just don't know. I don't know if it's only the idea of us having to report to another agency on what we do and having that somewhat that we owe stuff to them. Yes.
Yeah, and I certainly we we report on funding to all sorts of agencies.
Right, federal stuff that we have to do. Like, I don't want to add another thing to it that we're choosing to do.
Yeah, um, but many of our our organizations that we're a part of, whether it's governmental organizations or related to power, you know, all of these associations, they all have membership requirements. So it's it's not unusual that an organization has membership requirements and we see benefits from being in partnerships organizations. Um, where the hosting the education events and things like that, we're proposing that this would be done by our citizens. We already have a committee who is excited about sharing the information that Provo City is doing in these things. And this gives them a another set of talking points that they're really excited about. So that kind of outward facing work and things is done by an existing citizens committee that we have that's really happy about it. Um, I do not want to impose a lot of administrative burden for something that I would not feel is worthwhile. I think that this is worthwhile. And the cost of being this is far less than getting like a lead certification or something like And the cost of being this is far less than getting like a lead certification or something like that for our buildings, right? Because again, those are types of things where you're kind of paying to play. And in, for many of our, our buildings and our practices, they are. Um. Sustainable and fiscally prudent, right? Because we want insulation, we want those efficiencies, but we haven't necessarily gotten. Lead certification or we're not seeking it on all things because that's so expensive. This is a case where we are doing these good practices. And the price to say we have this. Is only five hundred dollars and it's going to be paid through this little public-private partnership so that the city is not paying that. So I see that we've, we've taken care of that and we'll be able to get. The positive story benefit, we'll be able to share this good practice and good example with our community.
Counselor Hamley?
Um, yeah, thank you for all the work on this. It seems to me, my biggest question was really, you know, how the. Staff and administration felt about it and hearing from Doug and Hannah, um. And knowing how energetic the sustainability committee is, uh. Seems like a relatively small ask for. Good benefits to the city, um, and I will personally join you in. Helping pay for the five hundred dollars, so I would definitely support it.
Any other questions for Counselor Whipple? Rachel, where would the closest to B city be to Utah? You said there are none in the state. Denver, Colorado Springs.
Hannah has that information.
There's none in Southern Idaho, mostly barbecue.
And you mentioned two universities have this invite, the B city environment on their campus.
Yeah, they're called B campuses.
Okay, which, which ones are those?
It is not BYU. We, we have, we have a couple of people who are trying to work on that. There are some. Opaque blocks within the administration, so they're still trying.
It's U of U and U of U. People like you said, working on it at BYU, they're very ambitious and throw both ideas and read something with you together. They're hitting their roadblock, so tell their system.
So USU and U of U?
And U of U.
Yeah, we would be the first in Utah Valley, in Utah County.
And Hannah, you have had an opportunity to talk to the county about this and explain what we've made of that.
Yes, they would be the committee assigned as our city's responsible organization. And they will receive annual reports from parks, they're very. They also already present at three annual education events. Where we're powering the KDA or product or programs, we couldn't stop doing this. We have grant funding for those. Uh, booths that we get, so we have to keep maintaining our grant commitment there. We could add in other booths or work with other volunteers or our parks to work and. To help get some educator, um, or some education about pollinators there as well. Those booths I've seen in similar events tend to be very.
Any other questions for Counselor Whipple? Um, Justin, do we take a vote on this?
Uh, so it's up to you. I have. There are times where it would be helpful, um, to get stat direction on a conflict like this to come back to. Such a night meeting, so in two weeks, or, um, we kind of. Just left the status quo of no motion to be that, then we come back in two weeks, but.
Okay. Um.
If you're comfortable with it, I think it gives that some. More precise direction.
Okay, I'd be happy to entertain a motion relative to this resolution. Counselor Hamley?
Uh, I move that we, um, affirm the. Uh, proposal and that we receive, uh, this item on an evening vote in two weeks.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second that. Counselor Hoben, thank you.
On moving forward to the proposal, Brian, would that mean that we go ahead and put in the application and make sure our resolution language is appropriate? And then we would vote on it, or is this a Hannah question?
I think that's a David question.
The order of operations question.
Yes, so what we would need is to submit our application to Zerces. Um, once they have approved our application, then we'll be able to bring it back and approve the resolution at the end.
So I would make a slightly amended motion to allow for that, um, application to go forward.
Okay.
Alright.
And a second by Counselor Hoven.
Yes.
Um, I'll call for a vote then. Counselor Hamley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay? Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Holden, yes. So the resolution passes five to two. Thank you.
Alright, I will go back to my more comfortable spot now. Thank you.
Alright, next we have a report regarding ADU enforcement for the month of December presented to us. By Scott Johnson.
Good afternoon, um. You're good. So just as a reminder, this is the monthly update on ADU enforcement throughout the city requested by the council. Um, for me to come back each month, reporting on, um, how enforcement is going on with ADUs in the city. Um, I'll say at the outset, December is a very slow month, um, across the board with enforcement. Typically, um, with the holidays and with students being out of town. And in greater numbers, um, so the numbers you'll see here today are. Generally consistent with December numbers, but lower than what you'll typically see other months, um. So this is adding the, the numbers from my presentation last month. To what the December month numbers were, so in total for the month or for the. Year of two thousand twenty-four, um, we had ninety-eight total ADU cases. Um, of enforcement that were opened, um, that. Have been and are continuing to be and through some. Form of the process of, um, of enforcement, um, and investigation. Uh, fifty-three of those cases have now been resolved before they've been, they've gone to court, um. These numbers are up from ninety-five. Last month and forty-seven, um, respectively from last month.
The previous year, you mean? From the previous year?
Last month. So la- last month when I came to you, um, we had ninety-five.
Okay.
And forty-seven for those two numbers. Adding in December to those previous numbers gives the, these totals. Um, ignore the little line on the bottom, that was an error on my part, not removing that from my previous presentation. So these are all of the year of twenty twenty-four.
Are unfounded.
Uh, we'll get to that in just a second. I've got that in a later slide. Um, so for the. Just within the month of December, we only have three code enforcement cases open that were AD related. Um, before the end of, end of the month, we're able to investigate and send notices of violation on two of them. And have one of them closes unfounded. Um, through our investigation with that one case, we found that the owner was living at the property. Um, he was potentially thinking about renting an ADU. We talked to him about it. Um, he was actually thinking more so about potentially moving. And so we educated him on what rental licensing process was if he decided to move out. And how he would not be able to rent it out as a duplex, um, so we, we definitely made sure he was aware of that. Um, and so with, with there not be, not being any violations, he wasn't renting at the time to anyone in his. Um, what would be his ADU, uh, we closed the cases unfounded. Uh, throughout the month of December, we received eleven new. Uh, rental license applications for ADUs, um. This is then broken down by neighborhood, so you can see kind of where throughout the city these applications, um, are coming from, um. Within the month, we were able to look at two of them and realize that they were not even in areas where ADUs were allowed, so those were denied. Um, two of the applications didn't even get to my staff because they failed to pay the fees. Customer service canceled those applications, um, and then the rest, the remaining seven remain under review and are. Going through the process. Um. So this is just reflecting again, uh, similar graph that I showed last month. Just adding in with the December numbers, the total. Um, ADU related cases broken down by neighborhood, uh, for the full year of twenty twenty-four. And next, um, this will help an- answer, uh, Counselor Bogdan's question, um. So last year we had, or sorry, last month I'd reported sixteen unfounded cases. Sorry, fourteen unfounded cases. This is reporting sixteen, so two of those cases, um. Had been, uh, deemed unfounded, um, two additional, so, um. So this is for the year, yes. So looking from last month to this month, I've got the numbers here. So previously the cases under investigation was twenty-eight. So we've completed an investigation on a few of those that's down to seventeen that are still being investigated.
For the whole year?
Correct, so the cases that had come in, there's, so there are still seventeen cases. That we are investigating to verify. If the violation exists, um, we had. Last month seventeen cases with NOVs had been sent. Uh, we're now twenty-three total cases had NOV sent, um. One additional case has been sent to the legal process. Last month there was only one showing. For the month, for the year of twenty twenty-four up until November, um. Unfounded, we just talked about, and then total resolved, um, last. Uh, presentation I showed was thirty-five up through November, um, and now we're at forty.
Scott?
Yes.
On these cases are. Are these cases where we're looking at them because somebody's reported it to three-one-one or to zoning or because you've identified them on your own?
Uh, so they're both. Uh, we've had some cases that have been open because. They applied for a license and we looked at it and went, oh, no, you're not allowed to do this, so we opened a case and looked into it and. And, and take the necessary actions. Those are ones that are very easy to get moved from investigation into NOV. Or notice of violation sent because. When they apply for their rental dwelling license for an ADU, we do a quick. Oftentimes we'll do an investigation earlier, or an inspection early on. And see that they are renting. And notify them that they can't have an ADU because they're not in the right area, and so cases do get open that way as well.
On ones where they're, they're open because of a complaint and say it's. Unfounded or, or something like that, do you let the complainant know? That it's unfounded, like, how, how does that work?
Um, I'm. Hopefully my staff is doing it. That's what I've encouraged them and, and directed them to do, to make sure to reach back to the complainant, um. What often happens systematically in our, in the computer system. If somebody submits a complaint through the portal system. And their account is set up properly to receive emails automatically from the system. Anytime the case gets updated, they get an email sent to them, letting them know the case was updated. To a notice sent, or the case was updated to close unfounded. So oftentimes citizens will get an email directly from, from the system, letting them know that. The case has been closed unfounded or closed remedy, whatever the, the status may be, whatever's changed.
Yeah. And those, those automatic updates don't have a lot of. Information in them, right? So somebody who gets an email that says that was closed unfounded is like. What? Did you actually talk to them? Like, they. They don't necessarily know the process that you went through or what unfounded means. Um, and so we're, we're still getting complaints on, on the same units. Um, because they don't feel that it's, it's been resolved.
Well, right, and so any city records can be obtained through grammar request. Um, I know some citizens that are in the boat. That are well aware that if they wanted to obtain more information about the case, they could request it through a grammar request.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's typically so that. So the information is disseminated appropriately. That is the preferred method that, that that information be, be provided to.
Okay.
Complaints. We, we do, if, if they call and ask, hey, what happened with this case? We'll let them know, this is what, this is what I found through the investigation and this is what, why it was closed this way.
Thank you.
Counselor McKay?
Um, we set, we set this up, you know, it's by customer complaint, right? It's by citizen complaint. And I do think there should be more customer service to it. The follow-ups and the automated system are utterly useless. They just say closed. And I get them and they mean nothing to me and I don't know what really happened. I do think, I mean, this is less than a hundred in a whole year. You have less than a hundred complaints.
For ADU related.
Oh, just for ADU. I was like, these numbers are not.
Yeah, no, total cases, we, we hit more than the thousand.
Yes, I was gonna say, I'm like, this is blowing my mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, these are just AD specific.
You guys have emailed all these people? I think it should just be standard protocols. You're updating your own system that you update the person who, who put in the complaint. We, we would really help the attitude that we do nothing, nothing ever gets addressed and no one ever follows up. I think it would really improve citizen. Understanding and happiness with our enforcement, and I think it would give them a lot more faith in the system.
Absolutely.
Lea?
Just that neighborhood meetings, I just wanted to ask what you would like this. They would just say, neighborhood meetings, Rachel, three and I. A lot of the times when someone asks this, it's just going lotion stuff, so we don't. Can we just direct them to call their office? Especially if they have a case that's open or they've got, you know, six floors. Is that still, is that, like, we're just saying that so like, we don't know, call them. Is that what we should be doing?
Absolutely, they're, they're absolutely welcome to call us to find out more information, um, if, if they're not. If, if they would like to know exactly what happened, we can talk to them within reason about the details of, of the case. Um. In, in open forums, I don't like talking about specific cases, so. At neighborhood meetings, I, I would, I would defer to, let's talk offline to make sure that we were, were providing only the. Information that's.
Scott, what's your turnaround time? So from the time that someone. Makes the complaint or files the complaint until the time, all your investigation. Until it's either resolved or founded. What is the general turnover time? How long does it take you?
I would say for a lot of these cases, probably closer to the six month mark. Um, just because of the nature of investigating some of them, being able to verify the occupancy, going out. Multiple times knocking on the door, trying to get somebody to answer the door to find out what's going on with the property. And having to do that not only in the initial investigation, but then following up to. With the legal process to verify that it's still in violation. Um, making sure that we have sufficient evidence for our legal team to. Take those charges into court.
So six months on an ADU.
Uh, I, I would say standing here, that's a pretty good. Um, estimate, estimated average.
Thank you.
Scott, could you clarify, so every ADU application becomes a case, becomes a case or only. Those that are not in the right zoning?
Oh, only if it's, if there's something in violation that needs to be addressed. So if somebody comes in, they're in an ADU area, they apply for an ADU license. We review it, we. Require them to make potential updates to the property if they need to have smoke detectors installed or whatnot. Give them time to do that and then approve the license. No code enforcement cases open in that instance.
I think the only feedback I have is similar to Counselor McKay's, that the input we get most from neighbors' residents. Is, um. You know, we've reported it a couple of times, we haven't heard, can you check on it? Can you follow up? If there were some way to keep residents informed as to the progress or status. Of their complaint or case, um, that would help.
Okay, absolutely. I can definitely work with my staff to, to approve that communication. Okay, absolutely. I can definitely work with my staff to, to approve that communication.
Any other comments or questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your report today. Next, we'll move to an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at five fifty-seven east, four hundred south. From the one-family residential R one-six zone to the low-density residential LDR zone. In the Mazer neighborhood, this will be presented by Mary Barnes.
Thank you. All right. All good. Okay, you may recognize this application. This first came before you December third. Um, but it's been a while since then. So um this is just quick context maps of the area. Um, in the Mazer neighborhood, the applicant is wanting to rezone his R one-six property to LDR. Um, this is the new concept plan he's put forward. If you remember back in December, um he did bring a concept plan that showed two townhomes in the backyard. Um, and that was why he was asking for that LDR rezone. However, um he received direction from the council at that time to come back with a new concept plan that showed uh just one home in the backyard, a single-family home, to take out any, if you remember, there, there was alley access in his original concept plan. So um to take out any alley access and to make sure the um single-family home in the backyard would have the capability for a um accessory apartment if the, you know, if the future owner wants to have an accessory apartment there. So um you can see on the basement floor plan, there's an eating area. Um, this is the type of house that he'd be planning to do. This is, um if this rezone is approved, the applicant will have to go through project plan approval, which will mean um we'll look at landscaping, that kind of thing. Um, and he will have to go through final subdivision approval, like we talked about, um this, let me go back. This home would be subdivided off so that it could be owned separately. It had, it would have the potential to be owned separately. And then um a building permit for the home as well. Um, and I have the exact language of that um motion from December, if, if you'd like to hear that again, but if not, that's totally fine. But any questions?
Cam, a question, question about the process. So he has a design here where it's built very obviously for an ADU. And someone who wanted the whole house wouldn't want that design in the basement necessarily. So what is the process as far as, because the land would be subdivided, it would have to be owner occupied. And then the owner would want to have to want ADU. So does that all get decided before that basement gets built? Or like, what's the process?
I believe the property owner or the applicant, and we can, we can ask him later today as well, when he comes to the night meeting. His um plan is to go through the project plan, um approval process with staff and planning commission.
So does that mean you guys?
Division, yeah. And then the building permit, he'd build the basement as well and then sell the entire thing. Does that answer?
Do you understand my question? Like, I'm still wondering, because the design he's showing you is for an ADU, not for a single-family home. So is that getting built and sell the house or?
So what, what we're seeing here is a concept, uh a concept that could come with the reason. What we're talking about is in some shape itself. I was after that, really depends on how the development
But I am curious, like, if I'm asking you, what is your process? Like?
So they have to go through identification, so full civil, our control claims through staff and planning commission. Once staff's approved, they come back to our department for a building permit.
So would, would you guys approve this right now?
Not, not as is.
So when they have the zone, which could, could, well, my question is, could this house be built exactly as is before the land is subdivided?
No, the, the land would be subdivided, there's a condition of approval with.
Okay. And then would but this could be built before we have an owner? Who knows what that owner wants to do?
Yeah, this, this unit is still be rented through the, the planning machine to approve of it.
With an ADU?
Now, with an ADU, they'd have to get a second kitchen occupancy restriction grade signed recording property that says.
So if this was built before it was owner occupied, you'd have that second kitchen agreement.
Right.
Is his intention to, to build the basement out?
The, um, I, that's a great question for him. I haven't asked him. Um, I would assume so. His intention was to completely I believe the townhomes had basements as well, and his intention was to do the basements for those as well. But I can ask him and have that.
Yeah, his intention was to rent out all the basements and the, his, his intention was to rent out four places, the other plan.
No, his intention was to rent out the two townhomes and then the front existing home. There were no ADUs. ADUs aren't permitted in townhomes. They're only permitted in these single-family homes.
Do we, do we know if he's addressed the landscaping issue?
Um, he hasn't. Landscaping usually comes through um the project plan approval process. That's where we get, like Aaron said, the full civil set. The architectural plans, the correct elevations. I'll go through the design standards with him. I can think.
I'm sorry, I should ask my question. I'm wondering uh it was brought up that this particular site, that there is no, it's gravel. It shouldn't be gravel. I'm wondering if he's remedied that, or if it's still the same way it was last time he came to the council.
Um, I haven't, I haven't been there recently, but I would assume.
It is, it is still gravel.
It's the same, okay. Um, I'm not sure what his plans are, but I would assume that he's waiting to see the final concept on this to start um working on his site and making it um properly, properly landscaped. When he goes through project plan approval, he'll have to submit a landscaping plan so that we can go through it and make sure it meets the requirements for the LDR zone. So he's probably also waiting for that, I'm sure. And it's also been very cold. So it's hard to put in landscaping right now, I would imagine. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mary? Yes, councillor Bogdan.
So where's the drive-by for this secondary unit? Is it probably over here to the left?
Yeah, uh-huh. It comes up where um that fire access was in the last plan. It just comes up the left here and you can see there's two parking spots on the side as well.
Two parking spots on the side? Is that what those two victims?
Uh-huh, yeah, just above the existing home.
Oh, so there is access from four hundred south for that second home?
Yeah, there is no access from the alleyway. It's been completely cut off for this concept plan. Thank you.
Okay, we'll uh look forward to further discussion on this at tonight's agenda, on tonight's agenda. Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Codes regarding building height and unit size regulations in the general downtown zone with citywide application presented by Erin Ardmore.
All right. Uh, so the history of this one, um the potential developer of the Harris block came to us a while back, um asking about uh restrictions, regulations in the DT one zone. Um, and for him, height was the biggest issue, um having that one hundred-foot restriction. So we talked about, you know, what, what kind of things could he bring forward and, and ask for a change on that? Uh, he initially brought just a standard amendment from one hundred feet to one hundred thirty feet for all of DT one, and, and that was it. Um, but as we started talking about it with him and as the council continued talking about for-sale units and things like that, we thought there's an opportunity here uh to, to do kind of a scaled approach to hopefully get him and similar developers downtown, what they would need for increased height to make the project uh doable. Um, but at the same time, for the city to get some for-sale units out of it. Uh, so you can see that tiered system um on the asterisk there, um kind of goes up incrementally with the percentage of for-sale housing that you're providing in the project. Uh, so that's the first part of his, his proposal. Uh, the second part of it is there um just some, some cleanup on uh oh nine oh, and then if you can go to the second page for me. I might have not given you all of it when we said, um, so I can talk about this one. So here's the Harris block. We all, we've all seen the kind of defunct Harris block exists like this for a while. Um, so this is an effort to try to get that to develop, to try to bring some value to the city. Um, is that my last slide on this one? Okay, uh, I can read it from the staff report here. There's also, um oh, it was on the previous slide, I'm sorry. So, uh, the cleanup here also involves uh the subsection two. Uh, so currently, mixed-use developments on Center Street uh get relief from the minimum unit average size. Um typically, it's five hundred minimum, eight hundred average. Um, mixed use on Center Street gets that five hundred minimum, six hundred average. So he's just also asking that to apply to University Avenue. Uh, we thought this made sense, uh with Center Street and University Avenue being kind of the the core of our downtown to have similar um allowances to, to be applied to them. Uh, so that, those are his proposals. Uh, he'll be here tonight to talk more about it, to talk more about kind of what for-sale uh percentage of for-sale units means for development downtown. And he's, he's gone around and talked to a bunch of uh different, you know, financial groups, um and getting some feedback on that, which I think would be helpful for the council on, on more general idea of that. Um, but that's, that's all I have.
Councillor Christiansen.
So as I read the, the asterisk of the building height may exceed a hundred feet, uh with the following percentages guaranteed by means of written agreement with the city for sale, housing being visual owner. It says occupancy required for the first year of ownership in a residential project. That doesn't sound like what we talked about last time in council, where we talked about it being deed restricted and every time it comes up for sale, it has to have a one-year um, you know, homeowner occupied.
Yeah, I would, I would say that's because this proposal was written months before that discussion.
All right, I just, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Um.
Like, our goal, like, our goal would be giving, like, these percentages, and it's always a problem.
Yeah, that would, that, that restriction would be in perpetuity uh for that first year.
And, and like I said, he'll be here tonight. Um, you can, you can chat with him and see if he's amenable to, to adjusting his proposal to that.
Sorry, quick question. Uh, so in this case, Brian, this is not like a, I mean, we can negotiate that directly with them over the dais.
Right, right. Because, I mean, this isn't agreement, this is a proposal from him to change the code in order to allow what he wants to do.
It's not specific to any one property or project. It's just, it's DT one, the general downtown zone as a whole. So amending the text of that zone. We're not going to have, you know, a discussion about how many units are you providing with deed restrictions and stuff, because it is just a text amendment at this point.
Yeah, but it, but this is a, because it is a change to the code, you can change the code however you want. Okay.
Councillor McKay.
Um, go back to the next page. So all of that light orange to the darker orange is the DT two, but all this kind of pink orange is DT one. That's pretty big.
So just the dark orange?
No, the, all the light orange. DT one.
So to five hundred west and one hundred east or two hundred east?
Yeah, yeah, about there and about, about five hundred north and down to the rail station west.
Do we still have the um step-back provision that was in place years ago and is reflected in that condo project on First?
On Center Street?
Yeah.
There is a step-back requirement still. It has been changed a little bit over the years, but there is still a step-back requirement.
And this change would not?
It would not impact that.
Councillor McKay.
Talking about, talking about the step-back provision. I didn't know. I walked the planning commission and that one building where the coffee shop is, I thought it had a step-back, but the, the final thing didn't have a step-back.
It's just on Center Street to respect the historic nature of kind of that, that two, three level feel of, of historic Center Street. So that's only part of it, it affects it.
At one point, you did agree to that for the neighborhood and then
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
No, it's familiar with that.
Councillor Bogdan.
I have a couple of questions for you. So did you guys help him come up with the percentages or did he come up with?
We did, yeah.
Can you explain why you had ten to twenty and thirty to twenty to thirty and why you wanted all those? Like, why not have like fifty percent?
Well, I mean, to get all the way up to what the height allowances in the DT two zone, the downtown core of a hundred eighty feet, you do get up to that, that forty-one percent higher, um but we cap it at that. So just doing incremental steps down from there is, is how we broke that up.
So in a start at twenty and not, you just leave off the ten and just go from there.
Uh, we just, we just thought this would make the most sense to just do this incremental step.
The incremental step? And then how does this work? Because we've been told time and time and time again that they can't mix apartments and condos. So how would you typically get ten to twenty percent per sale?
Well, I, I don't know if you can't. I, I know it can be difficult. And in this specific case, I think that is the size of his development area, proposed development area. Uh, lends itself to multiple buildings, which in talks with me, he's talked about doing different opportunities through the different buildings. Not everybody's going to have the opportunity.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering is it's just because of his size, his is so large that he could actually, so actually his his percentages could actually go up more than forty percent homeowner occupied, just because he owns the whole block.
Yeah, potentially.
And would this be for every single building on that block would be a hundred and twenty feet?
It'd be for the project as a whole. So it's, you know, providing the percentage of all of all the buildings, all the residential units. Our percentage of those dictates what height any of the buildings could go up to. Does that make sense?
So on this block, if he has two buildings that are maybe three stories that are for sale units, the rest of them could be a hundred and twenty feet theoretically.
Theoretically, yeah, if they're all still under one parcel.
And as long as they met that. So well, okay. So how many units would twenty percent of his entire block be?
That, I don't have those details. That's, we haven't gotten that far.
Twenty units or?
He hasn't submitted a, a plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, Erin, you will thank you for your presentation and look forward to discussing it more tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, did you have a question for him? Okay. Next, we'll hear from Michael to uh lead a discussion regarding the elected officials' compensation commission.
Hey, awesome. So, sorry, unlike councillor Whipple, I don't have any puns, jokes, videos, or cool PowerPoint. I made this like two days ago, so we just got black and white. That's all we got. So uh today, we just wanted to give you a briefing on the elected official compensation commission. Um, and as it's a mayoral election year, we are required by Provo City Code to convene this commission. And today, we're just going to outline some of the key deadlines and the actions that we need to take um leading up to that. So just some quick history, uh twenty sixteen and before, um, there was no outlined procedure for elected officials to review their compensation. In essence, the mayor was able to set their own salary and the council compensation was outlined in code, but there was no checkpoints, requirements for it to be outlined. And prior to twenty sixteen, it hadn't been reviewed for over ten years. And this kind of often led to compensation changes for the elected officials to be kind of awkward and added a, a kind of an unwanted political layer.
I make it why?
Yeah, so uh entered the elected officials' compensation commission. So this is a seven-member commission that is convened every four years, supported by the HR department. And they're tasked with creating a report and recommendations regarding elected official compensation. The twenty twenty-one report was um included in your packets for your reading pleasure. Um, it's made up of three residents selected by the mayor, where there's no advice and consent required. Uh, three residents selected by the council and one member selected by the six other commission members. So some key deadlines. So sometime in February, board appointments are made uh by the mayor, the council, and the other commission members. On April eighth, the council is due to receive the commission's report in a uh On April eighth, the council is due to receive the commission's report in a traditionally during a night meeting, just to allow for extra transparency. And then anytime between that April eighth uh meeting and the June seventeenth council meeting. Uh, the council is required to vote on the recommendations of the commission. The council can choose to either approve, reject, or modify the compensations based on that report, and the recommendations uh for the mayoral compensation compensation and the council compensation are voted on separately, so they're two separate issues, so you could vote to let the mayor go up to four hundred thousand dollars a year and you guys can lower your compensation to one dollar if you wanted. Okay, so, some next steps. So what staff is asking from you is that between now and February fourth, which is one one week to submit to uh our executive director your nominations for the commission, this will kind of give us a couple of days if we get more than three um nominations for us to kind of hammer it out via email to uh get those um appointments ready for the February eleventh meeting. We realize it's kind of quick, but um the commission has a lot of things to do in a relatively short time span, so we we wanna get them going. Any questions?
Sounds good. So to be clear, um, when the budget includes an annual COLA increase, it does not include elected officials.
It it does, the the COLAs do include the elected officials as well. This is just like a general.
Okay.
Compensation study review.
Right, because sometimes we'll look at the Daniel's Market rate study for our different departments and everything and adjust the base level price or compensation that we do for them, so that's separate from our COLAs.
Uh, just, I mean, I think the biggest jump we ever had was, and probably will have was, I'm pointing at you, because it was when when you were on the council, I think the salary was had been the same forever, and it was very low. And then it went, I think it went from twelve thousand to eighteen thousand after they studied comparable salaries throughout the state, um, and and then it's been adjusting since then, but
Yeah, okay.
There probably won't be anything quite that dramatic. That's just a pretty significant discovery that it was, you know.
Right.
Wait. So maybe you regret that you ran so early. Because you could have made so much money, so much money.
Yes, Mayor.
I submitted my names and, um. I have submitted our my three names. My three are the same three from four years ago, they all agreed. One, one that I love and was something I've always appreciated in him is Sheriff Tracy. Who Jim Tracy, who wasn't elected when the sheriff is an elected position, so he's like, he lived it for twelve years. And he's just been really good at having this vision of
Mm-hmm.
Of what it means to be an elected official, which has been really helpful and.
And is he one of your people?
He's one of, yeah, he's one of the three.
It might be helpful to know who they all are so that we can.
I have not received the names, but.
Yeah.
Suppose.
The names.
It was in our packets last time. I don't remember who they were. I recognize some of them, oh, it was the lawyer, Laura.
Yeah.
Right.
And I can't remember the third name.
And the mayor has, excuse me, the mayor has two of the similar appointments as last year, and their third appointment was the member that was voted on by the other, and then and then you put that that member onto one of your three appointments there. So, one of them was no longer available from the original.
Remember the third person?
Anna King.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Who are our last three? They're all there too.
We had um Tanya Howe, Laura, Kabina, and Peter Madsen.
I did it early, you just got the easy ones.
Peter Madsen, I think Bill Holderstrung did this once, two, maybe eight years ago. Okay. Alright, well, we'll.
So reach out to your friends or your enemies, depending on how you want them to recommend.
So when we make a recommendation to you, you want us to um check with them first on availability.
Yeah, I think that.
Willingness to.
I think that'd be great.
That that.
Yeah.
For you.
I'm just having this vision like you are now on this committee. Would be fun.
Yeah, so if you could check with them and then send in, say, this person is willing and able to serve by February fourth, that would be, that'd be great.
Okay.
Fast turnaround.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Alright. This will make headlines.
It will. Alright, next we have an ordinance creating an apartment of airport. Presented by Isaac.
I think this is an introduction that anybody in the room could could give, so, um. Thanks for, I'll I'll appreciate I appreciate the chance to do it myself, we'll just talk about the Provo Airport and kind of where we are and why we think this step makes sense. Um. The airport has been around for decades, of course, and this is a, if if this goes through, this is sort of a historic moment that I'm sure many have looked forward to. I remember first coming into the mayor's office in this meeting discussion uh, those first weeks of, you know, what about the BNE department? Um, and certainly want to acknowledge all those who've uh paved the way to to get the airport where it is today, including airport directors, mayors, um, and others who've who've been a part of this journey. Um. And then we've all heard the story of the mayor kind of looking at initial plans when she got in and said, okay, it looks like we will build a terminal at some point in the long-range plans. Tell me about what's gonna be different in twenty years from now that would let us build those. Well, we figure by then we can get all the money together and do it, well. Why don't we try to start wrestling up the money now and uh those words that uh are still echoing and will echo for a long time as we look at what's out there already and um and and look at what's happening, um, this, you know, coalition of support and funding. Un- unbelievable the way that other entities have supported, caught this vision, seen the value, and stepped up with their own dollars uh to do this, so it's been a phenomenal experience to see uh, the state, the county, MAG, federal government, uh chipping in money to to help with this. And so Brian Torgeson uh helped complete the the project and uh and delivered it, and it started to take off, um, no pun intended, um. In incredibly well to where, um. We see this unprecedented community connection, and I think there's multiple meanings to that, we one of my favorite things to do, and I'm heading out to an airport meeting, it's just so dang cute to just look at the drop-offs and the the pickups, if you if you haven't done that, wow, it's just hard not to smile. It feels good, you see moms and kids and grandpas and everybody, and it's just adorable.
A lot of native pollinators there at the airport.
And uh, and so there's a lot of community connection that way, and we're connecting with the outside world. But it also has been a connection for our governmental entities, I mean, this has really helped strengthen relations with the county and others, this has been, when you find that positive ground to come together and do something, our legislators. This is, this is something, uh, you know, this is, this is a something to celebrate and and to get around and work together on, it's been, it's been phenomenal in so many ways. Something that uh our chief administrative officer, Scott Henderson, has really kind of instilled in his department certainly. And then is fun to watch it kind of going citywide is, is we protect momentum. Uh, momentum is a is a thing, and uh and you you, when you got it, savor it, protect it, build on it. As we see how he got best in state, and then let let's do one more, let's let's get accredited. And why don't we build on that, and all along, it's not just about the awards, it's how can we up our game? How can we up everything we do? I want to be next level, and so that kind of vision is something we're seeing out here too, and and we have momentum and we appreciate that. Um, the decision to create it, to make it a department would recognize the operational and the project management size and scope of this effort. And really, when you, when I, when we've talked about this and thought about it, this has been one that in a lot of ways we could have probably justified doing this back when that early conversation of why don't we go do this now? Because over the last several years, what we've seen is, um, you know, in an organization you always want to respect chain of command, and there's reasons why things are set up. But with the dynamic environment that's been going on with the airport, we have found that over the last several years, um. We need to be meeting with Brian regularly, we're out doing fund funding exercises ourselves, he's got big decisions to make that need mayor's office support or approval, and so in a lot of ways, functionally, that has been happening. But the one piece that's awkward about that is in an organization like ours, you always want to involve everyone in a chain of command on something. Well, a depart, a public works director has plenty on the plate to not having to be meeting every week also in the room where every time mayor's office and Brian Torgeson are meeting. So there's, there are a lot of good reasons for this, I think. Set set those organizational ones aside, this is kind of a unique beast. I mean, this is, this is different, this you know, I heard Brian Torgeson mentioning the other day that he, you know, he's calling it regional, and it was only in a later meeting that he clarified to me. I don't know, Isaac, when I say regional, I'm not talking about Utah County. I'm talking about western states regional. Oh, that's what you mean, and it truly is the case, we have three daily flights going to Dallas. Uh, this is, this is a community facing uh, asset of a Provo City, it's a, it's a community asset. And so for all those reasons, feels to us that this is a good step to make. Certainly, there's one other, and that is recognizing uh, the leadership and the and and the efforts of Brian Torgeson, that's not the driving thing, but it feels good to us too to say, yeah, you you've done such a phenomenal job, you've got so much ahead of you. That uh, that 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 feels good too. Um, this puts him uh in the mayor's cabinet, as it were, as we sit around for directors meeting. Does the, as it goes into the level, the airport, the airport should be in the room for that uh, direct connection to the mayor's office and in there as part of our discussions, goes right on that level too. So, that's the, that's kind of the backstory and the reasons for that. Um, and unless there are any questions for me, our plan was to turn the time now to a discussion of the actual technical details of the code amendment uh, with Brian Jones, so.
Any questions for Isaac?
I'll be here either ways.
Okay, uh, I can stand at the podium if I need to, I think that, I think that, uh my presentation has been oversold. My presentation is there's a new paragraph that says there's a Department of Airport, and everywhere it says depart, airport manager, it now says airport director, those are the two. Do you have the, as, I say, I mean, we can, you know, you can see the paragraph on the first page of Exhibit A. That's really the only substantive change, just adding the paragraph that lists what the department does. Down for, yeah, that one, so that's that one eighty right there is really the only substantive change, because we just took the division out of the public works department and created its own paragraph, otherwise, all technical stuff.
Gary, you have a question?
Yes, Counselor Hamlet.
What, does this uh uh, require any change in language about the airport board? Does the airport board change in its function in any way? Um, I mean, is there something different about a board that's directly under a department director versus where it is now?
No, I don't believe so, we've got a number of other boards that work in that same way, so I don't in this, um, I don't see see there's any reason to make any changes to the board.
No other questions for Brian or Isaac? Alright, thank you both for your presentation. We'll now have a break. Um, fifteen minutes, we'll come back at three thirty-five. Five minutes early for the tiered water rate discussion. There's a.
Recording stopped.
With us. Uh, we've done a lot of work. We're doing a lot of work within the city. I want you to know that whether it's the reclamation plant, the drinking water plant. Uh, today we will be talking about our distribution system, our water distribution system. And trying to do improvements to that. Plus, we're talking about our tiered water rate. I just want you to know, we got a short presentation. Keith Larson is here from Bowen Collins. We rely on Keith an awful lot. He deals a lot with our master planning. He knows the system a lot better than sometimes I feel like I I know it and I'm here all the time. So but but Keith is a very effective consultant. This company does a lot of good work for the city. I will say this, if I could just do a shout out for the residents provoke. We have asked in the past for the residents to conserve water. And they have done an outstanding job in conserving water. Today we'll be talking about tier grades. What we're trying to do is to take that to the next degree as far as hoping to that we can conserve water a little bit better by by going into a, well, I will say a simplified tier system by going into three tiers versus two tiers. Right now, I'll turn the time over to Keith. To uh do our presentation, we'll be talking about the distribution system. Our system is very old. And you see everything that happened in California. And that is the last thing we want to see happening here in Provo is having problems with our system. So I'll turn the time over to Keith and then we can answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna keep this relatively short, but I'm ready to answer any questions that come up. We have been here before. We've talked through this uh for the past year. I don't have any new information for you today. Uh, what I want to do is just spend a little bit of time reminding everyone of what we've talked about before and kind of where I feel as a consultant, uh, taking the input from uh staff and from the city council where I would recommend that you land. So let's jump into it real quick. Let's see. There we go. Okay. So just a reminder, in terms of your revenue needs, you have uh three major categories. You have your operation and maintenance costs. And as you all know, those have been going up with inflation like everything else. Your ability to get work done for the same dollar has decreased over the last well, certainly over the last five years, we've seen a large change. Um, you have planned capital projects. The last time I was here, we were talking about your master plan. You adopted that master plan to provide service both for future growth. And to maintain the quality of service in your existing for your existing residents. And you identified eighty million dollars worth of capital proof improvements over the next ten years. So those are need to be completed in order to support the plan and level of service that you've identified. And then last is rehabilitation and replacement. And we've talked about this a little bit. Gary brought some of the pipes in and we looked at those. Uh, but as he mentioned, Provo is an aging system. And based on the expected service life of the of the uh facilities you have in place. You should be spending about fourteen to eighteen million dollars a year. Uh, and that's in twenty five, twenty twenty-five dollars. Your current investment, uh, it was a little higher, but with that inflation going on, it's kind of uh chipped away that your current investment is about nine million dollars a year.
Keith.
Yeah.
So so the um recommendation is for eighty million. Does that account for the difference between nine million and fourteen million?
No, so uh, the good question. Thank you for clarifying that. The eighty million would be all the planned specific improvements identified in the master plan. And if you take that number and you divide it by ten, it's about eight million dollars a year. We're not proposing exactly eight, but it's about eight million dollars per year. The difference between the eight and the fourteen would be this rehabilitation and replacement. So that's on top of that. So we take the specific planned projects and then uh we have a number of other projects that are just your regular uh bread and butter replacement of your system. Smaller six and eight inch lines that are aging um and and need to be get some attention. In fact, that's the next slide. And did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
You mentioned that Provo is an aging system. Well, isn't every city an aging system?
Sure.
Um, is ours any worse than other cities or just typical?
Uh, I would say that you are mostly typical. But you are one of the older cities in the state.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember McKay.
No, I was curious had, you know, period three plus breaks or leagues pretty here on average for us. What is it? What's on average of other cities or the state?
Uh, you are slightly higher than average. Uh, it depends on the size of the system. Um, and I I attribute it to the age of your system that you're slightly above average. You're not. You you have a very well maintained system and it's uh generally good condition for its age. Um, uh, some of your neighbors. The the way this works is you'll see the breaks slowly increase with age and then you get to a certain point. It's around uh fifty to sixty years. They start to increase and about eighty years, it really skyrockets, kind of an exponential growth. And so in fact, that's what's this talking about a little bit? Is you look at the age of your system. What you can see is those really old pipes nineteen eighteen to nineteen fifty-five are about sixteen percent of your system. They though result in thirty-eight percent of your breaks. That is a break rate that is six times higher than the newer pipe uh pipe that's built since nineteen um since nineteen ninety. Um, the yellow uh represents about a three times as high a break rate. So I mean, it's like you would expect. Things get older and they break more often.
Um, looking at the break rates, what are they mostly from? Like what percentage are just spontaneous from the versus like construction or?
So uh Gary could probably comment on that, but I think the majority of your breaks are corrosion in your system. Uh, do you have any additional thoughts on that, Gary?
Yeah, I would say the majority of is the age, if you look at a pipe, it corrodes over time. We have learned a lot over the years on the right or correct placement of pipe. Okay. And some of this older pipe, they just dug a trench to put the pipe in. That is not how we do it now. We backfill with sand, we put a wrap around the pipe. There's a hole, you know, we put grease on the on the fittings. We do things a lot different now than they did then. And also this corrosion, it's uh we have what we call hot soils. It's a chemical reaction against the pipe, but also upon the bench you have movement. Okay, which is another problem. Which goes back to being incorrect instruction practices when they started by the pipe cannot fail, so just it breaks. And when we have breaks, sometimes it's around the outer edge. Sometimes it's an actual hole right beside the pipe. It's a bit varies to answer your question.
But it's mostly corrosion. Like what percent is human error somewhere? Like destruction or?
Well, we have inspectors that we try to have there. We can't have an inspector there every time a pipe is installed, every bit of it. So yes, I would say there are some air or incorrect practices. But sometimes we don't catch or we're not cap. I mean, some of these pipe, we have pipe in the system that are a hundred years old. Okay. We just don't, there's no way we know how.
Yeah, I in terms of, I I know you had a kind of high profile break here a while ago that was result of a contractor uh who hit the pipe. That is a very small percentage of what we see. Uh, I don't know, five percent or less. Most of it is aging, rusting pipe that just reaches the end of its life. Um, you you can kind of see, this is just a map and you can see where the the older parts of the city and then how it kind of built out over time and you've added pipe. Um, it's tough to see on a map like this, but your brakes are primarily focused on some of those older areas of the city. And as I mentioned, it's about six times as high a break rate uh for those older pipes than the newer ones. So um you've seen this one before and this is essentially just a reminder, this is where we get the eight, the excuse me, the fourteen to eighteen million dollars of recommended uh investment. Uh, that is based on looking at if we could get a life of eighty years out of our pipe. Then we only need to put in fourteen million dollars a year. If we could get only sixty years uh out of our pipe, then we then we would need to invest up at that seventeen million dollars a year. Um, this assumes that all your pipes are are kind of breaking at a steady rate and we know that some some years you put in more pipes and some you put in less. So this is a guideline. Uh, but what it tells us is if we're down at nine over a long period of time. Uh, we will eventually start seeing some significant problems. Uh, the city did have a lot of contributions in um in this last year in terms of uh unexpected input of capital into the system, but in the long term, that's not uh going to be a sustainable um or or something that we can rely on necessarily over time. So going back to um the recommendations, we would recommend that over time you continue to increase your investment in the system to be able to achieve uh uh at least a funding level equal to that eighty year replacement. In the long term, I'm not sure that's going to be enough, but I think this is a prudent uh stepwise approach to get our funding closer to where it needs to be so that we can avoid significant increases in the future when things really start to fall apart if we fall behind. So that's everything I have on rate increases. I want to move on to tier rates. Uh, any other questions or comments on that? Seen none? Okay. Okay, so, oh, uh, sorry, one more. I forgot about this. Just summary. The current average water month monthly water bill is forty-eight dollars a month. Um, I think we've told you that ends up on average being about forty cents a day per person. Forty-eight dollars a month. With a twelve percent increase, the average bill, it would go to fifty-four, which is about six dollars a month increase. So that's kind of the magnitude that we're talking about. Uh, okay, proposed tiers rates. We looked at, as you know, we looked at probably uh uh at least a dozen different tier rates. Uh, based on the feedback we received, we came back. This is our recommendation. It is um two things. Number one is it's uh kind of a middle of the road approach. Not overly aggressive on the upper end or or subsidizing the upper end either. It's it's consistent with cost of service. Kind of middle of the road. Um, we did look at additional tiers going to four tiers, uh but the recommendation is to stick with the three as a starting point. To use that for a series of years, see if that's accomplishing your conservation goals and then you could reevaluate. Um, but this this is a great uh initial step towards tiered rates. Some of the uh and I guess you've had a chance to look at that. I don't think there's anything new there, but let me just summarize a couple of the uh benefits of adopting this set of tiered rates. Uh, number one, as Gary mentioned, it would continue to provoke promote conservation. You pay more the more you use. So uh propose conservation there. Um, it does maintain water affordability by minimizing the change in cost in the lowest tier. Um, we, this would shift some costs to those higher water users uh of the twelve percent. They pick up a little more of that increase, which keeps your water affordable for uh your lowest water users, which would include some of your more vulnerable pop populations in the city. Um, this does satisfy the state's requirement for an increasing block rate schedule, so you would be compliant with code. Um, and this is also consistent with A W W A cost of service principles. We have tried to align the tiers as closely as we can to the actual cost of providing service in those water blocks. And so um just from a fairness standpoint, this uh accomplishes that. Um, so the impacts, because you're moving systems does impact people a little bit differently and generally what you see is lower users see a smaller change. Larger users see a larger change and that's not uh entirely unexpected. Um, uh, just for those who like percentiles, the low user is about your tenth percentile, the ten percent. Um, ninety percent people use more water, ten percent use less. The high user is a ninety percentile and very high is ninety fifth percentile. Okay, and that was it for my presentation, so willing to take any questions, discussion, wants to do.
Keith, could you clarify? Sorry, go ahead, Justin.
Clarification, counsel. So these are the recommendations. Sorry. Just to clarify for the council, these are the recommendations you'd have after the implementation of the increased impact fees.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the
I want to make sure.
The rates shown there uh include the twelve percent increase and are based on the assumption that you adopt the impact fees, which I understand you did.
And then Keith, if you could just clarify for me, could could you go back one slide, please?
The this direction? No.
Maybe maybe forward that one.
Okay.
So so is that to imply the third bullet point? That we are not in compliance currently with some kind of state requirement?
Um, let me say that you are technically in compliance with the state code because you do include two tiers.
Okay.
Um, and it is a very small difference um at one hundred thousand gallons, which is a really high um number.
Okay.
Um. I will say that, well, some of the legislators would suggest that that does meet does not meet the intent of the law, but you are you are in compliant with the law and this would just make it uh very clear that you're actually there.
Okay.
Good question. Yeah.
Counselor Bogdan.
Over to slide. You would.
The, sorry.
Go forward one slide.
This one?
Yes. So that's six dollars a month average. Does that include that two dollar base rate increase and they this summer rate increase and the winter rate increase or is that just the increase in one and two?
Uh, uh, sorry, I didn't quite hear you the
So you said an average of six dollars a month is what it would go up for household. Does that include that base rate on the bottom or is it just tier one and two?
No, it includes everything.
And that's on the higher end, so it's the summer rate and the base rate or is it the lower rate? It's going to be included in that six dollars a month?
Well, you wouldn't have
Average.
Sorry, go one more time. You wouldn't have a winter and summer rate. You would move to just the three tier or the, yeah, the three tiers. And uh the six dollar includes the average use by water users, which is less than ten in the wintertime, so most of your indoor use would fall under the tier one rates. And then in the summertime, your average user peaks out at about uh Jimmy, can you help me out there? I I want to say it's around forty or so forty forty thousand. Okay. And so they would still be in tier two, that average user.
And so the six dollars a month's average average per month or is it? What what would be the higher rate, I guess, in the summer? So if you have you, what would my bill go up in the summer?
In the summer?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you're so the six dollars a month is averaged over the entire year. So in the winter, you'd likely see a two or three dollar bill increase, which means in the summer, you're probably seeing some months, you've seen a ten fifteen dollar increase.
And that includes the base rate?
But and the base rate, yeah.
That's included in that six or ten or fifteen?
Yeah.
Dollar figure.
Yeah, correct.
Counselor Holden.
Um, do these tier breaks work like tax income level breaks? Like, am I charged? The first ten thousand, it's at that rate, this ten through fifty-five. It's not like once I hit fifty-five thousand and one gallons, I'm like retroactively charged.
For, yeah, you're correct. You would pay the dollar forty-six for gallon, zero to ten, two twenty-seven from ten to fifty-five. Um, just just like that.
And the reason there's no existing rate for tier three is because previously anybody who was fifty-five or or old, not older, over uh was charged the the one ninety-three or whatever?
Yeah, so pre currently.
Currently, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, currently you don't actually, you don't actually have any tiers. You just have a winter rate and a summer rate.
Okay.
So in the summer, you're charged a dollar ninety-three, even if you only use five thousand gallons.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor George.
Uh, so just a clarification on the process right now. So what are we um? What's the anticipated decision point here? We we're giving thumbs up to your recommendation and then and then what happens? Or down, uh what happens at this point? I mean, so you're
So I'm not the expert on the process. I I don't know if that's Gary or
Or a public works writer. Um, so what the intent is to get your feedback and then come back in two weeks. I mean, it's the uh the eleventh, February eleventh.
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Yes, two weeks. Sorry, math. They come back in two weeks and present for um in ordinance form for you to adopt tier rate and the water rate based on recommendations here. So the next step is to go to regular accounts to be adopted.
Okay, and that would be effective July?
You would make that into your motion.
Oh, okay, definitely.
Let let me just comment on that really quick. Anytime you implement a major rate change. I would recommend that that occur outside of the summer months. Um, people tend to blow a gasket if right in the middle of the summer, it changes and there's a big difference.
Hmm.
So I I personally would recommend you make it effective something like April first or something like that.
Counselor McKay.
Um, I think the base rate change is great. I think the increase of the winter and the summer is great. I think the third tier is too high. I I am concerned again about doing the whole tier things as far as if so many, so many more people living multi-generational, we have duplexes, triplexes, that so I understand correctly, would duplexes, triplexes, they would be they'd generally be charged one
Per unit.
Per unit, so that it would they'd become, you know, high rate users quickly, even though it was really three households, so to speak.
Are you saying it's per unit or per building?
They'd be by the building.
Is it by the building or is it by the unit?
Uh, this is, uh, go ahead, Jimmy.
The base rate is by water connection.
Yes, so wouldn't a lot of
One building has a big meter and it's bigger base charge, but it's not per unit.
Right, but a triplex would have one bigger base charge because of the larger connection. But their overall water would be charged as one whole thing.
So
So it would be a lot higher for them.
So so what we're doing now, there has, there are some buildings that have one meter servicing like a duplex or triplex. The way we do the construction now is if there's three individual, there'll be three distinct meters to each of those structures. So while we have a variety of things that have been done in the past, today we will be working that kind of stuff. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, but all the older stuff and
Older stuff is whatever.
The HOA.
Yeah, wouldn't they have communal lawns that they would water? And wouldn't that be one additional?
Or something. So so usually, so so that is worked out between the property owners, but city way we do this now is if there's three distinct parcels, even if their buildings are connected or three, you know, there's three people building three houses. They'll get each a di- in a different meter. One is way to feed the agriculture or they may split it up in something based upon how the landscaping is done.
Though the landscaping would have this separate meter.
It might be topped up, it's just one of the people on the homes. So so that's that's done with the ownership. So they'll they'll come into the triplex knowing who's taking the hit or if they all contribute to that one or however that's, but that's internally not done to the water part of the building. So the building just looks at the meters, charges off of those. Internally, they may have a way to make it equitable, but we just look at the meter and the usage.
But to Catrice's point, if you have a lot of lawn to water in the HOA, they're gonna be up in that four dollar.
So if there's an HOA, so like if you have a senior community, you know, fifty homes, each of the homes will have its own meter. Then there'll be an HOA meter that services and maybe two or three that does the clubhouse, sweep or whatever. And those are paid by the HOA dues and there's they're separate, but they're on the same tier. So the outdoor winner, the outdoor summer rate is going to apply. We may start using those heavier water during the summer. So the individual people though are going to experience low water uses or just doing internal usage on their own personal meters. And the outside will be paid for by their HOA fees. That makes sense.
Yeah, and let me let me know. I have in an attempt to not get too far into the weeds, I've limited this to your standard residential home. The final recommendations will include recommendations for commercial, multi-unit um other things like that. And so for example, on multi-unit, typically the way it's done is if there are multiple units, then they would pay multiple base rates. But they would also get multiple tiers. So they would not go into ten. They they would have, if the triplex would would go to thirty before they move out of tier one. So those details, I think, still need to be just ironed out if we have basic direction on where to go.
And to be clear, tier one, the new system would be year round at that price.
That's correct.
Tier two would be year round.
That is correct.
I think tier three is just too high. And I do, I I'm just not, I guess I'm not into the like, doing this for conservation does not interest me. I think most people, I think we've proven, city citizens have proven that they're very good. People are just wasting water to waste water, like they're conscious about it. And you're just gonna, you know, I think you're just hurting people who have gardens or who live multi-generationally or who have bigger lots and bigger lots would necessarily mean they have more money. And um so just don't, I don't, I don't like it. I there's, I maybe there's the odd idiot who wastes water and just is using it nonsensically. But I don't think that's it. And I don't want people to suddenly not water their lawns or pet green spaces or keep their yards beautiful because they can't afford to. And they have to literally put a gravel or you know, rip up all their, just let them die. So.
You say it's too high. Are you going to two fifty-five thousand or you're going with three ninety-seven?
Three ninety-seven.
Okay.
Like I've used the example many times. My neighbor has five families living in their home. And, you know, they're over the fifty-five. No, because they are five families with multiple children, very large household.
It's an average sized home and yard and so on. Commissioner rather, uh, Counselor Hanley?
Uh, I'll let Okay, appreciate it. Why, I just sort of clarification. Is the, is the biggest point of the third tier conservation or is it um, because I remember from our last conversation, it was more about being able to have the money for the infrastructure.
The third, well.
So it's, it does two things. When you tier it, you're actually distributing the cost better because those last fifty-five gallons cost the city more to produce per resident than those first tier. So so there is an equity thing that we talked about first is taking place. But the second thing it does is charge more for those last gallons. So it probably makes you think about it more and gives the conservation element. So so the first element is to try to distribute the price of the cost to those that are generating the cost to the city in a more equitable way, but then it has a secondary effect of conservation. And 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 to Catrice's point, there's opportunities, made recommendations. The way he did this is tier three is ninety-five two point five five percent of the water users are on that higher end. You know, you could split it or change it and adjust it and Keith can adjust the numbers according to the local thing. It should be two point five percent of the highest water users or something like that. We, you know what I'm saying? There's there's ways to maybe not get where you want to get, but do better.
That's an interesting number. Can you tell us like what percentage use of the city use that over fifty-five thousand inches mean?
I'll let Keith do that, but um I'm just gonna sit down at this point.
Um. So you've seen this before and there's a lot going on here, but I want to just point in right here. These are the current blocks. The ninety-fifth percentile uni-user is the purple right there. The maroon is the ninetieth percentile. The maroon is the ninetieth percentile user. So ninety percent of your residents have almost no use in tier three. Uh, there might be a month or two where they have a few gallons that are in tier three, uh, but, but ninety percent are below that. Here's your average or median user. You can see they're only halfway up uh, tier two. One other comment I would just make is, uh, you asked, is this for revenue or is it for conservation? And in my mind, you have two separate decisions here. One is how much revenue do you want to invest in the system? And that's the twelve percent increase. If you say we don't want tiers, we could just take twelve percent and we could apply it to your existing rates and you still get the revenue you need. So the, the tiers are really a separate decision on uh, how, who is paying for that? Uh, who, who is paying for the water and how?
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, the reason I was asking about the process is I've just been, um, I've, you know, I've been a little confused as to, um why we keep having the discussion and, and what's the deadline, you know, what, what's the, where's our sort of point of no return where we have to make this decision and are we um delaying this longer than is necessary? I, I don't really know that I have clarity on that, but I feel like we have, we voted on the three tiers. Um, so, um, I mean, if you're looking for um, direction from the council, I would make a motion that you come back um, uh, with your final recommendations in two weeks. Um, it sounds like you'll have a little more detail in that proposal that we can look at. Um, but at this point, I'm not, I, I'm not confident I can sort of identify any of those numbers as too low or too high because I am you know, you've given multiple presentations about the um the ways in which those rates will get us the revenue that we need. Um, so if we're gonna make um, adjustments to any of those, it seems to me that you've gotta go back and show us what difference that's gonna make to our revenue. Um, but I feel like we've been doing that, that a number of times already, so I'm just a little worried about kind of uh, bouncing the ball back to you continually and, and keep uh circling back and having the same discussion again. So I don't, I, I'm, I would make a motion that we um um, request that you come back in two weeks and that we have those final details for those three tiers based on your best recommendations.
Is, is that not already the recommendation that we have in front of us?
What's that? These are the recommendations without having necessarily the commercial or multifamily, so we would just add those on. But then, but these are, these are uh, and I understand that there's a lot of different perspectives being represented here, and uh, I couldn't quite satisfy all of them, but this was my best attempt to get you to where you wanted.
Well, I, I, let me, let me rephrase what I'm saying then. I, I mean, cause I, I heard that in what you presented and, and what was in the packet. I, I sensed that you looked carefully and the way you just described it to us now, um, with, with regard to, you know, trying not to over uh, over subsidize or under subsidize. Um, so I appreciate that you've heard those concerns and, and I um, also recognize that the city has spent a considerable amount of time and money for your professional expertise, so I'm um, I'm willing to adopt these in two weeks. How's that? Uh, that's a motion, that we adopt these in two weeks, but that included in that in two weeks, you'll come back with the multifamily and commercial details.
George, on your motion, are you adopting these proposed rates and so the twelve percent, eight percent, seven percent, six percent for the increases on that schedule as well?
Yes.
The, the whole proposal? Okay, I just wanted to know.
Isn't that what we're gonna vote on in two weeks?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, you're saying come back for the evening meeting with these rates, with an ordinance ready to be passed that does this.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that. That's clarified.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion or direction for Keith? As he uh, finalizes that for two weeks.
Um, is it normal that we pass that many years of increases? You know, apart from another council increasing it year by year, or?
We just did something like that on the B schedule.
It's, it's not, it's not unusual. I mean, you need to recognize that you're not binding them. They can change it.
Right.
Right, so.
Also, can you clarify for me, what is included in that base rate?
Uh.
It's just connection.
When you say what is included, are, are you asking, is there any water included in that or?
No, I mean, what do we use it for? I mean, we're collecting twenty dollars a month. For what? What is that supposed to pay for? Customer service billing?
So, so that pays for your staff, that pays for uh, the equipment they have, that pays for it's, it's, it's basically one component of your revenue that pays for your water expenditures. The, the component that actually varies by the amount of water you sell is is a smaller component than that base cost that, that you incur just having to have a system. So, um, I, I will, the, the last thing I'll say is both of these revenue sources come into one big pot and we don't necessarily paint the color of the money to specific items. It's just all used to satisfy your water revenue needs.
So it's not like some of the other fees that we issue that has to cover cost and cost only, it's so like what I was thinking is customer service billing. All of that would be the twenty dollars a month, and everything above it would be maybe refreshing our system and getting new pipes. That's not the way this works.
That's not really how it works. Uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, but no, you, the revenue just comes in and then you allocate it to operation and maintenance, capital projects, debt service to meet your, the cost of your system.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Keith or direction?
I.
Yes.
Well, I, are we discussing the motion?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, uh, cause I hadn't really piped in much on this quite already. Um, so to address the concerns about the highest tier, his chart that showed how few people are in that and for a relatively small period of time, takes care of my concern on that. Um, and with regard to your extraordinary multi-generational family neighbor, they're already getting, you know, significant financial benefits as a family by pooling their resources and by living in one household. And, you know, they're, most of their water that they're paying for is that, you know, the zero to ten rate and the ten to fifty five. It's only that excess that's at the higher rate, but that's appropriate for the use. And since you've got five families together pooling to pay for it, I, I, I'm okay with that. Is, is, and I understand that we may have different, different views on that one. Um, but that so few of the users are in that highest tier and for such a short time. But knowing that our system has to have the capacity for that use, and that makes our system much more expensive, seems to me that's fair that, you know, the people who are demanding our system be that large pay for that. That only seems fair, and I like the idea that by doing this, we will make that most essential amount of water as affordable as we can for everyone throughout the city. So if we change that last tier break to be higher, so it only adjusts or accounts for like two percent, either we have to increase that rate for that tier significantly, or we have to increase the proposed rates at the lower tiers, and then it affects everybody in the city even more. Not just those peak users who are, are causing the system to cost more. Um, I, I understand your, your concerns on conservation. What I think this does is not demand that people change you know, their garden or land use, right? But do look at, at being less wasteful, so changing, you know, different meters or things like that. Um, uh, we, we our water rates, even these proposed rates are so low. Like, our water is so heavily subsidized through like the dams and the pipes and everything else that we have from federal and state levels. Like, the cost of this water is far less than what it actually costs us to have this water and to use this resource. And we've really been spoiled by this, and we just don't value it appropriately because it's been subsidized for us for all this time. Yeah, I, I, what I like best about this is that as we're looking at the necessary increase in revenue, which will, you know, change the rates, that by doing that in conjunction with the tiers, we are making the most essential water affordable for our city, so that we'll be able to support the rehabilitation and replacement in our system and still deliver the water that people really need to run their households and to survive. So I, I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion or comments input? All right, if not, we'll, I'll for vote then. Uh, Counselor Holman? No. Counselor Bodman? I'm sorry?
Hold up, no.
Counselor Ripple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three. So we will see you in two weeks then.
Come back with a few more details and be ready to.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Make it official.
Thank you.
Chair, just a quick clarification, um, do the council like included that effective date of April first that was recommended as well? Or have I just opened the can of worms?
Let, we can talk about it in two weeks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I personally like it, but I mean, it seems like that could be, or you're just asking what should be the on the.
Yeah, they've got it done with something, so.
Initially, I thought we talked about something much later. Like in the fall, but is that, does anyone call that?
Well, I like that it would either start before the summer water season or after the summer water season, so either April or October.
Is there, but uh, isn't there a big issue with the the longer we delay, cause it's this first year where the increase is the highest, so if we delay that, doesn't that really? But it'll set us behind in our, in our revenue needs quite significantly. Gary's nodding yes, but.
We've already delayed this. Eric, oh, uh, yes, we've already delayed this nine months, so it's supposed to be even further behind. Our pipes are not getting any, um, okay, so yes, this puts us further behind, so. And we can replay it back on the schedule, it's been recognized by Keith, so, yes, thank you.
Okay.
So.
Then maybe reflect April in the draft and we can discuss it further.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith and Gary. The council will consider a motion to close the meeting. Brian?
Yes, we have two items uh, for discussion. Both those items uh to with character and confidence of the individual, which is a crude reason for a closed meeting, so it would be appropriate to uh, vote on that motion at this time. To, to request a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
And a second?
A second.
And we'll vote on the motion to close. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Rachel?
Yes.
Counselor Invecchio?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Okay.
And on that, Counsel.